All right, we're gonna call this meeting order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please have a roll call?
Yes, you may. Councilmember Shaker.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips is absent. Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Councilmember Grunio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Armstrong.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Yep.
And our town attorney is present.
All right. Introduction, presentations, and proclamations. We have introduction by Cindy Blackmore, Town Manager, the town's new Finance Director, Katie Pell.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm very pleased to introduce to you tonight our new Finance Director, Katie Pell.
Are you embarrassed?
Only a little bit.
I'm just very happy to have Katie here with us and to have her here to introduce to you tonight. Katie comes to us with nearly fifteen years of municipal finance experience. She's previously worked for both the City of Prescott and the Town of Prescott Valley. She's earned her bachelor's degree in AU. She has an MS in accounting and an MBA in public administration from Liberty University. Over her career, she has consistently led finance teams that have achieved the annual GFOA awards for budget and financial reporting, demonstrating her commitment to excellence in financial management. And outside of her professional achievements, Katie spends time with her husband and four teenagers. She has goats, pigs, chickens, bunnies, dogs, and cats on their farm in Paulden. So as you can see, she's not only a very talented lady, but very busy as well. And so Katie, if you'd like to say a few words.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to join your team at the Town of Chino Valley. I was born at YRMC in Prescott and have grown up my whole life here. And now that I live out in Paulden, this is the area that I consider my hometown right now. And I am very grateful to be part of the team, and everyone has been so welcoming. And I'm just very happy to be here.
Well, good. Welcome. Hope it's a long tenure.
Me too. You said four teenagers?
Okay, introduction and presentation of Town of Chino Valley's new hire, new employee hires, excuse me.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So it's probably been about six months since I've been before you with new hires. And since then, we have onboarded twenty-one new hires and retained nineteen. Two of them were out of our control, and they were for personal reasons. But it was a busy six months. And I have to say that Tiffany Rosenda is the Senior Human Resources Analyst and the Police Department and all the other department heads and managers did such an amazing job just coming together and recruiting for so many people. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of them. So just real quickly, I'll go through all of the new hires. So starting out with Arturo Castillo, he's a police officer. He actually just graduated from Narda in December, I want to say. Okay, thank you. And he was hired on June 12th of twenty-three, as well as Jason Ellert, Police Officer, graduated from Narda in December, hired on June 12th. Jessica Barrigan is here, I believe, with us. She's our Senior Planner. She's been probably before you a number of times. And she's part of our Development Services Planning Department, came on July 10th of last year. Bethany McCaffery, part of the Public Works Engineering Team, Management Analyst, brought on board July 10th. Anthony Davis, who is a police officer, came on board with us July 24th. Josh Noden is a police officer as well, came on board July 24th, same day. Megan Arietta, you may have met her. She's our accountant in our, with our finance team, came on board July 24th. Rhiannon Rubio is the great face out front for Town Hall. She's the administrative technician, brought on board August 24th, officially part of the Town Clerks Team. Megan Childs is an adoption specialist with our Animal Control Team, came on board September 14th. Jerianne Froberg is part of our Development Services Planning Department, Development Services Director. Lori Lineberry has nothing but amazing things to say about her. She's a Senior Processing Coordinator, came on board, this is actually incorrect, she came on board in, on September 20th. I apologize for that. Keith Hurt, Code Enforcement Officer, onboarded with us on October 2nd, is part of the Development Services Team. Jared Salsido, another police officer, came on board October 2nd of twenty-three. And I have to say, police officers want to work here. It's amazing. Things have changed. And we have such an amazing team over at the Police Department. So, yeah, we get to pick and choose. It's really nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, and since Officer McKenzie is here, her anniversary is coming up. She'll be with us a year, February 7th. So that's coming up very shortly. Sean Holmes joined our team. He's a GIS IT Technician with our IT Team, onboarded October 30th. Todd Lindberg is part of our Fleet Team, Fleet Mechanic, onboarded November 1st. John Arietta is also a police officer. He came from Scottsdale, amazing hire, came on board November 12th. They're all amazing hires. Dylan Willhide is a police cadet. He is currently in training in Narda, onboarded with us December 20th. And Katie Pell, Finance Director, she onboarded on January 1st, as well as Bruce Cooper, who onboarded with us on January 1st of this year as a Capital Project Manager in the Public Works Department. So, well, one more. Sorry. I apologize. Last one is Tanner Ludwig. He is in training with Narda as well. Came on board the first of August 8th, or January 8th, I'm sorry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, call the public?
Call of the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is at the discretion of the council and not required by law. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. Yielding of time will not be permitted. The total time for call of the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated. This includes loud outbursts, profanity, and disruptive discussions amongst our audience. Mayor, I do have a couple submitted cards. First one is Wesley Dill, not a Town of Chino Valley resident.
Welcome. Good evening. I'm Wesley Dill. I live in Prescott Valley. And I came to this meeting tonight to support the Yavapai County Preparedness Team. The subject is they have a shipping container, and over the years, they've accumulated a lot of things that would be very, very important in case of an emergency in this town. And they have, the Yavapai County Preparedness Team has probably in the neighborhood of eight or nine hundred people who participate in this organization. And it is an educational organization. I've taken classes in solar, raising chickens, sprouting, stop the bleed, CPR, all kinds of things. It is an educational type of organization. And they prepare, as the name says, Preparedness Team, for possible emergencies in this area. They've had a shipping container that they've been accumulating all kinds of things that would serve that purpose for years now, stored at the First Baptist Church. And they need to move that to a different location that is a commercial location at the far end of town. The Development Services has said because of zoning ordinances, they can't allow that. Because zoning ordinances say it has to be a permissive use. In other words, it's listed specifically and given permission to be in that zoning decree or whatever. And I'm sure that the people responsible for coming up with all the things that are permissible try to think of all the things that are possible. But I think it's probably a stretch to say that they come up with everything that's important that should be allowed in that zone. And I think this is a case where that, they are in error. And I would like for the council to direct Development Services to reconsider this in view of, this is something that could be very important. One of you guys, or gals, or somebody you know, or a family member, if there was a big emergency, may need help. And where's that going to come from? Yavapai County Preparedness Team has been preparing for years, got the members. We do things, they offer training, and it would be great that they would have the necessary supplies and things to actually help people out in the community. So that's what I would ask, that you direct Developmental Services to allow them to move that container that's been in the same place in Chino Valley for five years to just a different location. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next, I have Jim Arroyo, not a Town of Chino Valley resident.
I am a Town of Chino Valley resident. Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you very much. My name is Jim Arroyo. I am the President of the Yavapai County Preparedness Team. We are in our tenth year of operation, and my wife and I are also involved with the CERT program. We have credentials through the Yavapai County Office of Emergency Management. We've been through quite a bit of some pretty advanced training. What we specialize in is educating the public to be prepared for any and all natural and man-made disasters. And part of that involves, of course, your natural, you know, fire, flood, earthquake, tornado, what have you. But the man-made disasters are an economic collapse, an EMP attack on the power grid, World War III, which is underway, and also potential for civil unrest and a civil war in the United States. These are just things we've war-gamed out and we train people to be prepared in. The reason for our box is to have a staging area. And for the last twenty-three years, I have been an employee of Maisy's in Chino Valley, Maisy's Gun Shop. I'm a custom gunsmith. And Dave Maisy has graciously offered to allow us to put the box on his property in the corner, out of the way, to where we will have a staging area, which is critical. Because in the event of a disaster, there's a lot of commotion that goes on. And we have a lot of different supplies in there that can be very beneficial to the community. And we are also a nonprofit. We're a 501(c)(3). And I've got a small portion of my crew here. If you're with YCPT, raise your hands.
Small portion?
That's just a small group. We've got actually close to a thousand people on our roster, all around the county, that could be mobilized in time of a disaster. So the idea of having a staging area is absolutely vital to us because it's difficult to operate, and especially with the type of supplies that we've gathered that could be very useful, including a lot of medical supplies. So what we're asking, since the town code is kind of ambiguous, it is a permissive code. It doesn't say we can't put a Conex box on there, but the way it's written is if they don't say you specifically can put a box, then it's not allowed. And that's kind of ridiculous. That doesn't make any sense even legally. So what we're asking for is special consideration because of the type of organization that we are. And we are very much interested in proposing in the very near future a public-private partnership between our nonprofit corporation and the Town of Chino Valley to be able to assist in time of disaster, which will help offset the stress on the town. It would not cost the town everything. We are completely self-sufficient, and we have all of our own equipment. We're just looking for a place to set our box. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jerry.
Mayor, I have, the next one is Suzy Jarvis.
Yep. Good evening, everyone, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Suzy Jarvis with Chino Valley Pickleball. How come I haven't seen you out there? I am looking for all of you out there. Well, tonight I want to start by actually introducing my board. Some of my board is here tonight. So if you guys just like to put your hand up, Kathy. Hilla is our treasurer. Mayor Cruz Trevino, our secretary. We have Denise Olson, I know I saw her, over here. Patricia Becknell, I'm gonna spell that right. And then we have a couple other members that could not make it. These people are working very, very hard for getting this pickleball. And if you guys haven't been out there, you guys come out there. What I wanted to let you know is our progress. We are an association. We got our corporate, corporation. We are a 501(c)(3). We're all ready to go and rock and get some fundraising done. As of today, we've been cleaning up everything. We have fifty-six members, paid members. Guess how old the oldest one is? Eighty-two. The youngest one is eight years old. And I dare you not to go against her. We don't count, we don't give her any slack when she comes up there. What I'm looking for, of course you guys know, some new courts. Why? Because young people need to get out there and get behind, out of their Game Boy and get off the couch and come out and play. These kids need somebody else to play with besides us old ladies and stuff. So last Saturday, I don't know if you heard, we went out and we cleaned the courts. I was, I was so impressed. All the little kids were out there. Everybody had a hoe, they had rakes, we had bags. Everybody came out and we cleaned that whole entire court area. It was awesome. Come by, look at it. It looks great. And now on our fundraising, just to let you know, I have reached out to Prescott Pickleball Association. They're right over there by Pioneer Park. And we're gonna try to get a sit-down with their president and some of the people that actually helped them with their fundraising to bring in some of those big corporations that you see there. You have a Pi Medical, some of the big corporations that are actually helping them build those courts over there. They're looking at sixteen courts now. So that's where we are again. Come out, come play. We're out there at thirty-eight degrees. Come on, it's not that cold. You can always contact us at chinovalleypickleball@gmail.com. See you guys soon, right? I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, next is Armady May.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers.
Could you state your name? I couldn't under-
Armady May.
Okay.
I'm a resident of Chino Valley and a practicing veterinarian here. And I'm here tonight to express my support for the Yavapai County Preparedness Team's Conex box being permitted to stay in Chino Valley at the Maisy's shop. And I think that this organization has done a lot of help to this community through educational programs and classes, and I've benefited. I've also learned a lot about preparedness and how we can support each other as a community through this organization's efforts. So it would really be hoove our whole town's success to grant them the ability to keep the Conex box here in Chino Valley, close to the proximity of where the meetings are held. So I, again, I've been going to the meetings for a couple years now, and I think they're very beneficial for this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was all I have left.
Okay, I'd like to ask the Town Manager to schedule a meeting with Development Services so we can get the other side of this.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll look into it.
Thank you. Okay. Are we moving on? Current event summaries and reports. Status report by Mayor and Council regarding current events? I don't have any thing. I've been out of the loop. How about over here?
Nope.
All right. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just a couple quick things. I want to announce a change in traffic control for, maybe you've been over there, but on the intersection of North Road 1 East and East Perkinsville Road, we now have the four-way stop installed. There are temporary stop signs up for now, and the permanent one should be in shortly. So everyone be careful out there as we have a change in traffic control. And then also, we are seeking applicants for our Staff Advisory Committees that were approved at the last council meeting. So for both the Solar Energy Committee and the Zoning Code Update, we'd like to get our community involved again. That will be committees that will advise staff for recommendations that will come forward to council. So if you're interested, the applications are due by January 31st. For more information, go on our website and download an application or get in contact with Development Services. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Consent Agenda items. Would anyone like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item 5H.
5H. Anything else? The last one. Or down. Anything over here? Okay, I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring up Aaron, our Senior Clerk, to explain 5H while we're here on the subject. Okay, make a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
And I.
And I.
And I, pardon me.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries now.
Now we bring up Eric to explain 5H, please.
Mayor, Council, Aaron had to unexpectedly leave, so Sarah, our Deputy Clerk, will be presenting the item.
Good job.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Hopefully you don't have a lot of questions because I'm pinch-hitting here as of five minutes ago. Staff requested this item be pulled from the consent agenda to suggest some amendments to the entity appointments list as the town is no longer a member of the Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition. Staff recommends removing this entity in its entirety. And since the posting of this agenda, staff was notified that Councilmember Shaker wishes to be removed as the alternate to the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, also known as SIMPO. And we request a volunteer to this vacancy.
Does this require a motion? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to appoint Councilmember Eric to the alternate position for SIMPO.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have to make a motion to postpone, or what is it? Remove?
To remove.
Have to make a motion to remove.
Make a motion to remove Councilmember Shaker from the-
No, 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 remove.
What? We're gonna remove item H?
Yes.
No, no.
See ya.
Mayor, Council, we're going to, we're gonna remove the Upper Verde River Watershed Coalition from our-
Make a motion to remove the Upper Verde Watershed Protection Coalition, UVR, WPC, from the list of entities.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye, please.
Now?
Now, Mayor and Council, we'll have to make a motion to approve the rest of the appointments as presented.
I make a motion to approve Councilmember Grunio to the alternate SIMPO position. And Councilmember Shaker be removed from that position.
And Mayor and Council, I'm sorry about that. So you already made those two motions, but the original-
Amendments to the entities list.
Right.
Just a title change.
Correct. So the original item as presented with, besides the other two.
Clear as mud.
Andrew, can we have the correct verbiage we need, please?
Really?
You got it?
Of course, Sarah.
We just did that.
Mr. Mayor, a pretty simple amendment, our motion would be to move approval of the council of the appointments as, including the amendments earlier this evening.
Did you hear that?
No.
So moved.
You're gonna have to, so move.
Does that work?
That works.
Okay, second? Second?
Second.
Second, move, move. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We really need to get it together.
I hope so, Carrie's.
Seriously.
Okay. Let's see how I can screw this up.
If you need help, I'll get you on it.
Action items. Consideration possible action to adopt and approve the 2023 Yavapai County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
This is getting me all confused. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to put this on. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I come to you this evening to respectfully ask for your approval and adoption of the Yavapai County Hazard Mitigation Plan, and I believe you all have that in your packets. I have with me tonight Yavapai County Emergency Manager, Ashley Alquist. She will be providing you a short presentation on the Hazard Mitigation Plan and can answer any questions specific to that plan. Before she jumps in to the presentation, I just wanted to provide you with a short update as to our continued work regarding emergency preparation and planning for the Town of Chino Valley. For the past year, the Police Department has been working with the Yavapai County Emergency Management Team to review, renew, and in some cases, build a plan. See, you guys got me all screwed up. I don't know where I'm at.
You're right at home.
Review, renew, and in some cases, create new plans to ensure the Town of Chino Valley is prepared as possible to deal with any emergency that may occur. Ashley and her team have been very supportive throughout the process and have dedicated themselves to our success here at the Town of Chino Valley, and I thank you for that. The approach we have taken is one that requires several steps, which should typically be accomplished in a specific order for maximum efficiency. As you will recall, I previously brought before council the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact, which was approved by the council. Thank you. That was step one. Step two is the Yavapai County Hazard Mitigation Plan before you tonight. Third step in the Emergency Operations Plan for the Town of Chino Valley, which we're developing now, has to include both the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact and the Hazard Mitigation Plan. We will be finalizing the Emergency Operation Plan in the next few weeks, at which time it will be presented to council for review and consideration for adoption. After the Emergency Operations Plan is complete, we plan on exploring ways to increase our ability to communicate with the public during emergent situations and anything else that would benefit the town. So I'll get off my soapbox, and I'll turn it over to Yavapai County Emergency Manager, Ashley Alquist, for her presentation.
Thank you, Deputy Chief, and good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So thank you for having me here this evening, Mayor, Vice Chair, and Councilmembers. My name is Ashley Alquist, and I'm the Emergency Manager for the Yavapai County Office of Emergency Management. And I am here in support for you guys to adopt the Yavapai County 2023 Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Say that ten times fast. All right. So the Hazard Mitigation Plan provides updated information on potential hazards throughout Yavapai County, as well as the appropriate types of mitigation efforts for those hazards. However, the biggest role is truly in serving as a key to open the door for funding for Yavapai County. This comes in two forms, and this is going to be via public assistance after a disaster or circumstances in which we are needing reimbursement from either the state or FEMA after a declaration. Or through FEMA grants, such as the Fire Mitigation Assistance Grant, Hazard Mitigation Grant, Building Resilient Infrastructure Community Grants and such. And a lot of those grants that I just listed are provided to you through your partnership with the Flood Control District. So you guys have an intergovernmental agreement, and they are kind of that conduit. So they help in regards to that funding. Those grants can assist with funding for property acquisition, structure demolition and relocation, structural elevation and reconstruction, dry flood proofing on historical and non-residential structures, and localized and non-localized flood risk reduction products, projects, sorry. It also allows you access to funding to work towards mitigation efforts that FEMA identifies as public education and outreach, planning and studies, policy zoning developments, flood mitigation projects, structural mitigation projects, stormwater and wastewater projects, and staff training. When we went through this process with our consultants, they identified the following hazards. And this was based on what's happened in recent years. But the hazards that are throughout Yavapai County include earthquakes, floods, landslides, and mudslides, severe wind, wildfires, and winter storms. So the participating jurisdictions included all of the, all the incorporated areas, as well as the Prescott Indian Tribe, and obviously yourselves included. The big things that were included in this plan was to make sure that it was compliant with the new standards for FEMA. We needed to make sure it was compliant. We updated all of the maps and ensured that the hazard data was updated to reflect the last five years. And then all of the jurisdictions went through and updated their mitigation projects to make sure that those were updated and ready to go. Part of the process for this plan is incorporating a public comment period. So once we received our preliminary approval from FEMA, we did open it up for the public for that comment period. we did open it up for the public for that comment period, so we did print a notice in the Daily Courier, as well as the Verde Independent, on Sundays and Wednesdays from October eighth through the thirty-first, we also did social media posts. And during that time, we only received one public comment, and that was from a resident in the Blue Hills community out in Dewey-Humboldt, and that was predominantly about wildfires and their concerns for a lack of evacuation routes. And that's really not appropriate for this type of plan, this is a hazard mitigation plan, evacuation routes. In general, is not something that most people do in evacuation planning, because we just don't know where the hazard is going to be coming from, so if we identify routes and we put people on that, then they could get injured. That's gonna be something that is dictated in the event of an emergency, but I digress. But in any case, this plan is for hazard mitigation specifically to access those FEMA dollars. So in any case, that is what the Hazard Mitigation Plan encompasses, and it allows you guys access to those federal dollars. And that's what I have for you, if you guys have any questions.
Alright, question?
I read that in whatever we had expired September twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three. How come?
So it takes time, so the plan had been done, but it requires DMA approval, and then it requires to go to FEMA, so it's just a very lengthy process once the plan is is written, and then it goes through approval process and such.
So why was it allowed to expire?
What? It was just the process to get it done, just took a long time. Unfortunately, there's some history in general as to the turnover in the office, so when we got notification as to when the plan was due, it just didn't give us a lot of time to engage with the plan, so that's why we hired a consultant to get that going, but we had the plan provided to DMA during the summer prior to the expiration, it just, like I said, it takes them time to go through the plan to get that done.
So right now, the plan is expired and?
Right, well, the twenty eighteen plan is expired, however, the twenty twenty-three plan was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in December, and that's been sent off to DMA and FEMA for that to be instated, and that covers that. So that's for, the FEMA, it's enacted.
Okay.
And so what this is doing for you guys to adopt the plan, that just allows you guys to access that.
Good enough.
We were never in jeopardy because of the lapse, we were never in jeopardy of not being eligible for FEMA funds should the need arise, were we?
No, 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 you guys are covered.
Alright, I read the plan, it's a good plan, it's a mitigation, I liked it. Mike, one question is in section six about reporting. Is there a reporting component to this plan? Are the municipalities supposed to give you updates? Or is it just a reference guide that any ordinance, policy, or whatever we do, including our general plan, we make reference to try to address those hazards?
So in general, with a plan, any plan in general should be a living document, and it should be something that isn't, because this plan is updated every five years, it shouldn't go sit on a shelf for five years.
And you made reference to that in your report.
Right, so this is something that we will be contacting all the local jurisdictions about once a year and asking for status updates, has there been any progress on the mitigation projects? And getting it to be something that's not as stagnant as what I think we've seen historically with this plan, so that way there's more data available.
So that's gonna be driven by the county, depending on the, I'm fine, thank you. Good job, by the way.
Anything else? Nope, nope. Alright, so, thank you. We're gonna open the public hearing, I declare it open for anybody that would like to comment on this.
I received no comment cards on this item.
Nobody? Alright, that's the case, we're gonna close the public hearing, and now we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend we adopt and approve the Two Thousand Twenty-three Yavapai County Multi Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C. Public hearing, consideration possible action to approve resolution number Twenty Twenty-four One Two Four Four.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Before I turn this over for Jess Barrigan to present the excuse me, ordinance and resolution before you on the last end of the agenda here tonight, I wanted to take a moment and address the unique situation with the rezone and the conditional use permit. These two both go hand in hand, so if the rezon, or the rezoning does not pass, the conditional use permit cannot pass. So as such, with this uniqueness, staff will be presenting item B and C together as one. It was written that way in your staff report that you would have received in your packet, so staff will continue with that presentation and then outline the respective motions broken up into two pieces, one for item B and a motion for item C. So with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Jess.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and fellow council members. Before you this evening is a request for consideration of, again, two separate items, which will be presented concurrently and will require two separate motions. The first request is for a rezone case ZC Twenty Twenty-three dash oh six. The request is to rezone approximately three point three two acres of land from commercial heavy CH to commercial light CL. And it applies to both parcels Three Oh Six dash fourteen dash zero two one H and Three Zero Six dash fourteen dash zero two zero D. And those would be the parcels that are on the southern, I mean, the southernmost parcels there that are highlighted for you on your screen. The second request is for a conditional use permit, case number CUP Twenty Twenty-three dash zero five. And this request will allow the existing mini storage and RV business to expand and redevelop their land and bring it into conformance with a combined seven point six three acres for that use. We'll stay here. The subject area, the seven point six three acre subject property is generally located at Two Five Three Five North State Route Eighty-nine, on the northeast of the intersection of State Route Eighty-nine and East Road Three and a Half North, approximately two miles north from our current location. The properties directly to the north and east are currently vacant and zoned AR-five, agricultural residential, minimum five acres. The properties that are on the south and west contain existing commercial operations and are likewise zoned CH and CL, commercial heavy and commercial light. And you can see that in the image in front of you. The subject property falls within the neighborhood commercial NC land use designation as defined in the town's recently adopted Twenty Forty General Plan. As such, the applicant's request to rezone the adjacent properties to the commercial light zoning district would be in congruence with the intention of the general plan. A neighborhood meeting was held for this project on November ninth, twenty twenty-three. Zero neighbors were in attendance. This here is an image of the frontage currently, just to give you an idea of where from the state route Eighty-nine. And here in front of you is the proposed site configuration, showing the elevations at the bottom that the applicant is proposing. The applicant does own all the parcels, he would like to redesign the existing storage and RV facility that they currently operate. As you can see, the site does indicate the building locations, the parking, the access configurations, and they will be submitting a landscape and lighting plan later once they get approval for the rezone and the CUP. It will be required prior to any kind of building permit issuance. The parcel that is town-owned right-of-way, parcel number eight, parcel number eight zero zero one three zero one seven L, that is, I'll come back here, the little strip here, the accessway, driveway to the rear parcels, that will be in negotiations with the town for its dedication to the owner. Approval of this request, oh, as you can see, the bottom has the architectural elevations, so that really illustrates what the facade is intended to be along the state route there. So approval of these requested items would allow them to expand their current operations, bring the district classifications into conformance. It will continue its regular operation, regular hours. In order to effectuate this request, we do have to combine all the parcels. To combine the parcels, they all need to be of the same zoning district to be able to combine those. So we will be asking the applicant to consolidate those parcel lines. That will be a requirement for the zoning change. The rezone and the CUP proposal conforms with the general plan and was heard from the Planning and Zoning Commission on December fifth, and they forwarded a recommendation of approval with a five to one vote. And that slide is stating that we held a meeting and they recommended approval. So as Will initiated, we will need two separate motions, so the Sorry about that. So we first asked the council to motion the approval of ZC Twenty Twenty-three dash zero six, and also the is it in the?
Sorry, give us one second here. Made a last-minute update to try to help with the clarity on what motions need to happen in what order. Where am I looking for, council? Keep going to PowerPoint. There we go, can do it, guys.
Okay, so we will need a public hearing for the zone change, following your motion for that item. And again, another public hearing for the CUP, the conditional use permit, and a motion for that item. So if we want to go ahead and do that, staff does recommend approval.
Questions?
I think, any questions?
I have some questions. The parcel that the town owns is just a roadway?
Yes, it's an access easement.
Okay, so it's no acreage or anything?
No.
Okay, and then it says you're gonna have shipping containers, they're gonna have shipping containers at the storage facility?
That is incorrect. Initially, they did come, so you may have seen that in the initial application, their preliminary, but because that was not allowed, they eliminated that from their final plan that you see, that we presented today, and that it's in your packet.
Okay.
So no shipping containers.
It says there's shipping containers, so that's wrong.
It does not say it in the staff report, and the latest one does not.
It's page three eighty-three of three ninety-eight, it's just attachment F, it's the applicant's submittal, it's not from staff.
That's correct. He did submit that, it was a revision they made in order to carry on with their project. So they did eliminate that.
Okay.
Hello. Regarding the conditions of approval, I just, one thing I found kind of odd, we're requiring that they can't, the place can't be accessible after six PM at night? Because it says seven AM to six PM.
That is the current hours of operation.
That's their current hours?
Yes.
And I understand that's what they made, that might be their prerogative, but should the council be dictating how long they're allowed to keep it open?
No.
But that's what I'm seeing right here. Am I not?
You can put, when it's a conditional use permit, you can put limitations.
No, I know, I understand that, I'm just asking if that's what we should be doing, is dictating how long they're allowed to stay open each day of the week. And my position is, we shouldn't be making that decision, but it's denoted clearly seven AM to six PM. And then we're also, I don't doubt that they want this, but is it a rule that we require them to buy video surveillance? Because that's another condition, applicant shall, doesn't mean maybe, shall, implement and maintain adequate security measures to include video. I'm not against that, and they very well may want to do it, but is it a requirement that the town is saying you have to buy these things?
Good evening, Mayor, excuse me, once again, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. The conditions that are in those packets are those conditions that are offered from the applicant. So being that this is a conditional use permit, they offer those to help make this palatable, if there's any discontent with this. So these are all at the recommendation of the applicant.
And I'm fine with these conditions if the applicant wants to do it, I just didn't feel like the government should be telling them, hey, you can only stay open until six o'clock.
Absolutely, your prerogative.
Alright, that's all I had.
Anything else?
I just have a question on the elevation, this two-story?
Correct, it should be a single-story unit, it's just projected higher.
Okay.
Typically, it'll probably accommodate RV storage.
Is there a time limit on this CUP?
I believe we put in a one-year to begin construction.
Okay, good.
Okay.
I like that.
Yep.
They want to get going.
Anything else? Eric, you had something? Bob, you got something?
I had mine.
Okay. Alright, now we're gonna, thank you, guys. Now we're gonna open, declare the public hearing open, does anybody from the public want to make comment? You don't have any?
Nope.
Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, recommend motion approve ordinance number Two Zero Two Four dash nine three eight.
Motion made?
Second.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, any opposed? Alright, motion number two.
Sir Mayor, approving resolution number Two Zero Two Four dash one two four four.
We need another public hearing before we can take a motion.
We gotta do another public hearing on that one. Oh, sorry, so sorry.
I rescind my motion.
Yeah, that's like the eighth mistake I made tonight. Alright, we're gonna have, declare an open meeting, open, we're gonna open a public hearing, for item number five on your screen, which is the approval of resolution Two Twenty Twenty-four Twelve Forty-four.
I have no request on this one either.
You do?
I do not.
You do not? Anybody else want to make comment? Okay, we're gonna close it, and then now can we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, recommend approval of resolution number Two Zero Two Four dash one two four four as presented.
Second.
Motion made in two seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, adjourn.
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, will you adjourn? Anybody want to vote against that? Okay, we're adjourned.
It's so weird that she's not willing to do it.